Hello.
Hello Karen. How you doing?
Good, how are you Mayor?
Good.
Sandra, how are you?
I got my last LLC. We got them all shut down, so I don't have to do anything.
No, that's good, well.
And I don't own the building in LLC, my practice isn't an LLC.
You have to renew it every year.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So I'll have to figure out how. Assuming none of that stuff's too difficult.
Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen. The following guest, please introduce your guest, is located in the next number five. It says Nathan Spencer. Once again, it says Nathan Spencer, from that number five. Thank you.
So we're not gonna talk about it at all?
Oh, yeah.
You're doing more running now than you used to. Cause you weren't working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are you being good?
You move up to sleep there, all the rich people up there.
Oh, those riffraff. I beeped at you again. I beeped at you again. You're going across Fourth Street, no. You must have earplugs then.
But I also can't see.
Oh.
If I don't know who you are, I might not wave to you.
Okay. I'm gonna pull the window down, I collect this.
I'll just start waving at everybody.
Okay. Yeah, I looked at that. I've seen the whole thing today. That was on me.
That is so true.
Exactly, and I spoke to.
I've seen the whole thing.
Uh, but we dropped that idea. So, but I'm glad, I mean. Right, you know, we brought that up and I'm happy. I'm happy. It's not exactly.
Hey Dave, how are you?
Right, yeah, exactly. Right, yeah, I agree.
Oh, I know you said that, yes.
So we could control.
You worked out alright.
I heard you on radio, sound good. Sounds good, sounds good.
Was it, was it?
It was something today. Oh, was it, okay. I just remembered when they.
I.
Don't have to honor it. So I don't wanna do this, so I was taking the time. I was gonna bring that up on our porch.
Oh, yeah.
I know you are. I can tell by your pike. At the call to meet in order for the stated session, please rise while invocation and pleasure. Our Father, my God, we thank you for all things seen and unseen. We thank you for this council, uh, that we may do our best to give the people their will. And also protect those out there, Father, that are in extreme cold weather, God, give them place to go. We're mindful that we can do all things for you. So God be with us in this meeting, we thank you for it and all things. In the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
With liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Eddinger.
Here.
Mr. Pinnabone.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Dr. Ruggles.
Here.
Ms. Sultana.
Here.
Mayor Panto.
Present.
Prove out the agenda.
Moved or approved?
Moved. Seconded. And seconded by Councilman Pinnabone. Roll call please.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles.
Aye.
Ms. Sultana.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. Actions under minutes of approval for February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by the mayor. Roll call please.
Mr. Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles.
Aye.
Ms. Sultana.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
And Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Seeing that we have no presentation to council this evening, uh, public comments, do you, anyone in the, uh, like to speak on any, uh, agenda items only? You cover this and speak your name, address for the record, and you have five minutes. Seeing none? The center agenda.
Uh, we have one person actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
Hello, my name is Robert McDonald, currently at two fifty Bushkill Street, apartment two, Easton, Pennsylvania. I want to speak on, I know it's new business, um, but I want to speak on the ordinance relating to the use and possession of marijuana. Um, oh, may I have the floor now to speak or?
Yeah, any items that's on agenda, so.
Well, honestly, I think it's a great idea, it's a, it's a step in the right direction for the city of Easton. I mean, I know that right now in New Jersey, um, it's already free as it is, uh, not free, um, it's a right for the people there to have it. I know Governor Shapiro has been pushing for it too, like in our state legislature for this, like even further back with Governor Wolf. And I know that this would keep us in line when it comes to the cities of Allentown and Bethlehem, who already have decriminalization amendments to their ordinances. So I want to say that piece on that. Thank you so much for your time tonight and have a great day.
Thank you very much. Any other one, yes please? Say your name and address for the, uh, record and you have five minutes.
Thank you Council, my name is Ronald Johnson, live on Washington Street. And I wanted to discuss the topic of criminalization.
Of marijuana? Criminalization of, I didn't hear the whole thing.
I would like to advocate for the decriminalization of my people and my community.
Okay, I didn't hear you well.
Thank you.
Is this an agenda item? I do not think so. Anything on the agenda?
Yes, sir. It is, um, I would like to mention, um, can I have my five minutes back?
Hold on one second, I don't think that's on our agenda for this evening. Ronald, you could definitely speak, but under public comment, non-agenda items. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Seeing none? The center agenda please. Motion.
Second.
And seconded by Dr. Ruggles? Any leave you in the comments to it? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles.
Aye.
Ms. Sultana.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we see reports, I have no reports, Mayor, do you have anything?
I would just like to, uh, make a comment about the last meeting, I made some remarks, I got a little bit upset. I'm very passionate about keeping crime out of our city, and I use the word illegals instead of criminals. Um, I never meant to say that all immigrants are illegals. I never said that, nor did the chief, and that's what, that's what made me upset, when one of our council members said that, that we said that. Um, what I said, we were talking about criminal element coming into the community and we don't want criminals, and I use the word illegals, and I didn't mean that. They were committing an illegal activity, an illegal act, but I didn't mean that all immigrants were illegals. As my voting record shows, I voted several years ago for, um, ill, for immigrants to, who are, do not have papers, who are not going through the legal process to get driver's license. And that was because I hired a dreamer as an intern, and her father worked in Atlantic States over in Peabody, and he drove. And he drove without a license, which means he couldn't get insurance. So he's putting residents at jeopardy, in jeopardy if, if they had, if he had an accident. Um, so I think my record is clear, um, we are all product of immigrants, even the Native Americans came across the, the land bridge, up around Alaska, they came down to North America. Um, I, I really believe that, um, we, 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 we always say, and I, and I believe I said a thousand times in my last eighteen years, is that, um, the diversity of our city is, is one of our strengths, and no one ethnic group or race has more than eleven percent. And I think that's very important, and I think that is our strength, that we have a, a mixture of people in our city, and we, we have a lot of immigrants. My own immigrant, my own grandfathers came here from Italy, uh, one worked for Bethlehem Steel, one worked on the railroad, Lea Valley Railroad. So for me to be against immigrants is not what I meant, nor was, was what I said. I do believe that immigrants do not belong here if they're gonna commit criminal activity. And when they commit criminal activity, our police department takes them into custody and takes them up to central booking at North Hampton County, and they do with what they want. I believe our, uh, uh, police department is doing a great job of maintaining crime, crime is down eighteen years in a row. And, uh, I think the chief last night said that when he first came on the force, the part one crimes were anywhere from fourteen to sixteen hundred crimes, uh, part one criminals are the most violent, uh, a year, and now we're down around the three hundred. So we want to maintain that, that, uh, crime and clean and safe community, and I just want to clarify that because, um, a number of people miss, miss, listen to what I said, and I misspoke, uh, because I was very passionate. I dislike very much when someone puts lies out there, and, and that person who did that did exactly what they wanted to do. They misinterpreted, the public misinterpreted what we said, and bingo, all of a sudden we have a controversy in the community. So I just want everyone to know that as far as I'm concerned, the mayor of our city, we will not, I will not vote for a sanctuary city or a welcoming city. I think that's redundant and it's not necessary, if you're breaking the law, you're breaking the law. But I believe that immigration is something that the Congress should take up, and we should make the pathway to citizenship in this great country of ours much easier than what it is. I, I talked to our Lebanese community, who, some people have been waiting five years, five years, and I think that's just im- impossible. So I just wanted to say that and put that on the record.
But Mayor, if, if I may, and I only want to interject because you and I spoke about this, and I, and I think you might have misspoke a little bit just now. You said at the beginning of your comment that you don't believe all immigrants are illegal. Based on our discussion, what you, what, no, no, right, no, but what you told me, I think what you meant to say was, you don't believe that all immigrants are criminals. That's what was stated from the last one, and that's what we were talking about, I think you, that's what you meant to say today.
No, I, I don't think I meant to say anything against immigrants. Um, I'm a product of immigrants, uh, both my grandparents, all four of my grandparents came from, uh, Italy and Sicily, and I don't believe that I would ever say anything against my ancestors. Um, people put words in your mouth, and that's the problem I have, that when someone puts words in my mouth and says, oh, you said, and the chief said that all, all immigrants are illegals, that gets me upset. Don't, don't put words in my mouth, especially when they're lies, and that person was lying. Not misrepresenting the facts, lying. And that individual councilman has done that in the past on Facebook, has, has misrepresented me and my family, and I, I wish he would stop.
Okay, we're gonna move along here.
Uh, I'm gonna respond to actually, because, because, uh, Mayor Panto actually said I lied. While he said in the live broadcasting, and I didn't say anything. I didn't say if you, if you, if you call immigrants illegal, I quoted exactly what you said, and it's live broadcasting, and the whole city of Easton watched it, um, actually beyond the city, uh, city as well. So you can't really say I lied. It's, it's on the record, four different newspapers.
I don't wanna get into an argument with you, I don't wanna get into an argument with you at a public meeting, but I do lie on Facebook all the time about my family. You say I was.
I do.
I think, I think.
I am just, I'm not gonna have an argument, but I'm gonna respond.
Bring the voice down, bring the voice.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond what, uh, because Mayor Panto, uh, said I lied. So it's on the record, four different newspapers quoted him, the exact words he said, so there is no lie. So if he thinks that was a lie, he maybe wanna reach out to the newspapers and tell them to remove that. So it, it was not a lie, it's, it's on the public record.
I believe at this point, though, I believe, excuse me Mayor, I believe at this point that the mayor did clarify what his statement should have been.
Right.
And that we can move forward with this now.
But, but he called me a liar, so I had to respond.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward now?
Yes.
Okay.
Stop posting lies on Facebook.
Um, the center.
I will post the truth. I will keep posting the truth.
Let me just say something, Mrs. Sultana.
I will.
We called the order, we're gonna move. The center agenda. I'm sorry, reports, uh, of committees. Okay. Lost my train of, okay. Finance, I have no report on finance this evening, but I do have a couple of things. First of all, I want to say to, uh, council, the mayor, and all, I thought it was a very good meeting last night. The dialogue was professional, um, I watched the whole thing, and, uh, I, I just thought it was very professional. A lot of ideas, a lot of passion, a lot of, uh, brainstorming, and I give Councilman Pinnabone credit for taking in and saying that he would certainly sit down with each of the council members and whoever else, uh, to go back and look at that and see if we can, uh, come to a, a admirable, just, uh, you know, decision on that. So thank you Council, although I was not here, I did do my homework on it. I, uh, I spoke to Mr. Pinnabone on several occasions about each of the ordinance that was coming forth, and also reviewed the live, uh, stream, uh, that, from the meeting last night. So again, I, uh, really appreciate Council, uh, giving up their time last night and really putting it out there, and the chief, who was here also. Uh, the other thing I want to bring to Council, I did have a question about, uh, in reference to the, uh, Eastern Home. I realized, um, that the Eastern Homes and the Housing Authority, uh, are two different entities, and the mayor brought that up last night. My question would be too, about this, uh, would be, where is Eastern Housing, or, uh, authorities, housing authorities? Will we be inspecting their units, because I know that when I was in that field, although we paid a fee every year, that HU does what he'd call a REACT, a federal inspection, which is totally different than what codes do. I mean, they're very, very, very detailed, uh, to the point where thirty percent of your occupancy must get, uh, the system kicks it out, and you must go to each unit, so nobody knows what's going on at any time. My question would be, are we gonna be doing a housing authority, and if so, how do we do that with the, uh, department that we have, uh, numbers? Uh, Councilman, I'll say, first, the answer is no. I blame Roger Ruggles for confusing us yesterday with inspections. So, um, we don't do any inspections, Home Eastern is not conducting any inspections. My resolution or my ordinance with landlord training has nothing to do with housing. Um, Eastern Housing and the Code Department will still do inspections as they, as they, as they've always done. Home Eastern does no inspections whatsoever. What we said yesterday was, and just for clarity, there's gonna be documentation for landlords and tenants on the website through Home Eastern. And every couple of years, all landlords have their property re-inspected. It's just a checklist to show landlords and tenants what to expect during the inspection. So we're not, Eastern Home is doing no inspections, uh, no inspections are changing, that's something completely separate. Okay. So, but if, if a new owner, new property owner has an inspection coming up, and they don't know what to expect, they can go on the home website and see, this is what the inspectors are gonna be looking for, so everything's gonna be the same. Thank you for clearing it up. You're welcome. Quite sure. Uh, on the good side, and there's, Mr. Hopkin is here this evening, uh, in reference to the, uh, Let's Go On These Streets, uh, project. Uh, we received some grants, uh, we already know about the forty-one thousand dollars. We also received, uh, from CDED, fifty thousand dollars, and my own LES, we received, uh, a hundred and forty-three thousand, which puts us halfway there to our goal. So Mr. Hopkin is, and is very optimistic about it, and so is the committee. Um, I want to thank Mr. Hopkin personally and publicly for all the work that he's put into this, and that we look forward to reaching our goal, you know, and, uh, making that, uh, park what it really should be. A, would you like to speak, Dave, to it?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we, we are actually gonna put that out for public bid, and we're probably gonna do it in the next two weeks. Um, I think it's good timing at the beginning of construction season, I think we could get some good pricing, and I, I think there's a chance we can, we can get this thing done, so.
Thank you for your hard work with that.
Thank you, it was a good committee.
Mr. Hopkins, or Councilman Brown, can someone call Mr. Pitts and update him? He's been reaching out to me, uh, looking for information, I've been referring him, but just so I can reach out to him, I think he'd appreciate it.
Can, I don't have his contact, can you forward that?
Sure.
And I'll reach out to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both times. That's all I have, um, uh, economic development, Councilman Frank Pinnabone. Thank you, Councilman. So we began working with Lafayette College to analyze results of the business recruitment survey. We completed the twenty twenty-five CDBG application and advertised the application round. We're still hoping that the money will still coming, come in from the federal government, um, so fingers crossed for all of our nonprofits. Uh, the Economic Development Department met with Senator Fetterman's Regional Office to discuss the funding needs and the, um, status of the resources. We began work on two new business prospects for the location in the city. We submitted a three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar request to PennDOT, which will rebuild the sites in Bowie Street intersection, which you heard here before, in terms of signals, crosswalks, ramps, probably the most outdated intersection in the city. We're preparing to submit an application for eighty-five thousand eight hundred dollars from MAP towards supporting the new comp plan. We have an application for one hundred thousand from PHMC toward the Hooper House historic rehabilitation. And recently, members participated in Blue Zone City Priorities Meeting for both food insecurity and infrastructure. I also received an email today from our new Congressman, um, McKenzie, who, and I put him in touch with our Economic Development Team, he's looking for a place to put an office in Easton. Um, when we get to the, my marijuana ordinance, I will be making amendment to the fees from last, from the discussion that happened last night, and all the emails I received today from residents, um, I will be making amendment on fees that we can discuss at that time. That's all I have, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, planning and codes, Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown. Um, the city administrator, Campos, sent me the parking occupancy reports a few days ago, I will be reviewing those and coming back to council with a recommendation. Um, as we talked about before, we have a lot of residents who are utilizing the parking permits in the garages, and some of them come home to no parking spaces at certain nights. Not every night, but we have to ensure that these residents have parking spaces when they're coming home from work, or coming home from the grocery store, their kids practice. Um, so stay tuned for that, um, the next Planning Commission meeting is, will be held on Wednesday, March fifth, at six thirty PM. Our planning director did reach out to the Wood Avenue Developer last week, and we do expect that they will be there based on their response. Um, as of earlier this week, they still have not secured the PennDOT HOP permit for the project, so, um, I guess we'll have to wait and see if they will be presenting on March, but they plan to at this moment, um, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Public safety. Yes, ma'am. This is the sixth, right?
The fifth. Wednesday, the fifth. I said the fifth. Wednesday, March fifth, at six thirty PM. It's a planning meeting.
Planning will be in here, they might use, somebody might have another meeting in another room. Public safety, Dr. Ruggles?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to inform council, I, I was told by the chief last night that our, uh, our grant for our LiDAR system, we have purchased a terrestrial LiDAR, we have purchased the drone LiDAR and received both. Um, but the grant was for two terrestrial LiDARs. So we went to order the second terrestrial LiDAR, and it turns out that they now make a different model number. And trying to order that, the people who administer the grant from the federal government said, that's not the number you had on your proposal. Um, so you can't, you can't get the newer model, even though the newer model's cheaper. So, uh, we're, we're at, uh, odds right now with the federal government on, you know.
Dr. Ruggles, you're not the only one.
Third unit, uh, I, I, I don't understand, um, their delay was the reason that they upgraded a new model. You know, and, and so it wasn't, it wasn't us doing it, it was them in the delay of getting us, actually getting us the money. Um, you know, once they said that the, the, uh, the grant was approved. So we spent about, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand of the three hundred and sixty thousand so far, but we're still battling for that last one.
Okay, is that all you have?
That's all I have, yeah.
Thank you. Artie. Uh, Artie, could you hold that to the end, please? Write it down, and you can ask at the end, public comment, thank you. Okay, public works, Councilman. Okay, Public Works, Councilman Eddinger.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have no report tonight. I do have several pieces of legislation on the, uh, two under unfinished and, and, uh, three under new business later on.
Thank you so much. Administration, Councilwoman Soltana.
Uh, Vice, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I attended the Home Eastern meeting last week as a vice president of the organization. Uh, we interviewed two candidates and of course, we are hiring one of them who is mo- the most qualified. Uh, just for those, uh, because since, uh, there is a proposed legislation on the agenda, for those who don't know, who doesn't know what Home Eastern is, uh, and what we are doing, uh, what we are going to do, uh, we started working on Home Eastern nonprofit organizations two years ago, uh, with the help of, uh, Mike, uh, Michael Brad, Alyssa Barada, uh, from Thorough Street Alliance and many other, uh, great people who are on our, uh, board now. So, Home Easter drafted a five-years-of-goal outlined in the business plan developed by, developed by Hillstone Economic. Uh, the purpose of the organization is to improve the quality of affordable housing in the city of Eastern, uh, rehabilitate fifty-four units of housing occupied by renters and homeowners uh, with income below hundred-and-twenty percent of the area median, including, uh, uh, lead abatement, uh, abatement, um, accessibility, aging-in-place modification, and facade improvements, uh, when needed. Uh, it also, uh, also go, the, another goal is to provide home improvement and rehabilitation counseling, um, and workshop to seventy-five homeowners, provide landlord education to thirty rental property owners. And we have already initiated that, as you all see the proposed ordinance from, uh, uh, Councilman Frank Penabon on the agenda for landlord tenant, uh, tenant, uh, tenant training. Um, it will also help increase the inventory of affordable housing in the city of Eastern, identify and take actions on at least one property development opportunity to create new units of affordable housing, um, increase homeownership, uh, opportunities for households with income below hundred-and-twenty percent, as I mentioned before, and everything will be refer, and it will refer fifty first-time home buyers to counseling and financial, uh, services. It will provide post-purchase counseling to seventy-five homeowners, coordinate affordable housing activities in the city of Eastern, and reach five thousand city of Eastern residents and business owners through public education campaigns. It will also assist, uh, two-hundred renters and homeowners by providing information and referral to services provided by other organizations. That's all, uh, all I have, uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Report of solicitors.
We have no report, thank you. That I could tell you, that I could tell you about anyway.
Uh, reporter to Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you for cheering the committee while I'm away. I appreciate that. Uh, but I am calling in, I just wanted to make sure the record shows that. Um, also, I would like to mention that on Saturday, March the first, is the Westward Mardi Gras, um, parade that'll start at, um, Sixth and Walnut and proceed through the Bermuda, Bermuda, which is, um, up to, uh, down Seventh Street, down to, uh, um, it'll pass Black and Blue, go down to Porter's Pub, and come back to, uh, um, Two Rivers Brewing. So, I, we're, we're working on that right now, uh, as far as the special events, um.
Start time, three o'clock, clear. Start time, three o'clock.
Yeah, three o'clock. So, I'm looking forward to that. It's always a good time. And, um, those three business entities do a great job. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Reporter, uh, uh, look, Mr. Campos is not here, so we're gonna, no correspondent, we can go into unfinished business.
Okay, we've Bill number forty-two. An ordinance, an ordinance amending sections of chapter five fifty-four, Shade Trees.
So moved, second. Moved in second. Any comments or deletions? Hearing none, roll call.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Soltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Penabon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Bill number forty-three, an ordinance approving a twenty-year contract between the city of Eastern and Safe Harbor.
Moved, second. Moved in second. Any comments, deletions?
I know that, um, just, Mr. Vice Mayor, I know that this is a long period of time, but, uh, we started this back in nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-eight, eighty-seven, I guess it was. And, um, it's been doing really well for the people who have to, who are under privilege and have to use their services. Um, and I felt that twenty years, when they asked me for twenty years, some people had a concern about that. I don't have a concern about it because I think homelessness is, uh, an epidemic that's gonna be here facing our nation for a long time, unfortunately. And so, I'm glad that City Council is approving it.
I, I would agree with you, Mayor. Also, I look at that the same way. I look at the neighborhood center in Eastern. It's an establishment that's been in our city for a long time and has done nothing but great things for our community. So, with that being said, we had a, a motion for.
And that's the same with the Boys and Girls Club of Eastern, which is, uh, still facing, um, retribution from the Housing Authority. So, we, we're working on that.
Madam.
Ms. Soltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Penabon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Bill number forty-four, an ordinance amending chapter five thirteen, construction requirements for E V charging stations.
So moved, second. Has been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Penabon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Soltana?
Aye.
New business?
Yes.
Um, we have a resolution authorizing Eastern D C E D to apply for a Keystone Historic Preservation Grant.
So moved. Moved, second, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Penabon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Soltana?
Aye.
We have a resolution approving an agreement with Trust, uh, Trust for Public Lands for the Eastern Trail.
So moved.
Second.
We moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Penabon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Soltana?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
A resolution approving an agreement with responsible recycling services to provide an electronic recycling event.
So moved. Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Penabon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Soltana?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
And Mayor Panto?
Aye.
And we have the following bills for introduction. Bill number forty-five, an ordinance granting permanent easement to the, um, Eastern Area Joint Sewer Authority for installation for new sewage, sewage pumping main.
So introduced.
Bill number forty-six, an ordinance adding chapter five eighty-one relating to the use and possession of marijuana.
So introduced. I know Mr. Penabon wanted to speak on this matter.
So, I wanna make an amendment, Councilman. Yesterday, we had, uh, as you mentioned, good discussions. And we have majority of support to see this bill get passed. And the main, my main ro- reason for bringing this forward, and I think everybody agrees, is to not stain the record of someone for a small amount of marijuana that will hurt them in the future. Getting a job, getting so many different options, one with different things. One thing that came up was the price of the fine. Um, we've heard from the chief and, and I took his recommendation to Mayor, Councilwoman Rose, Councilwoman Soltana, um, Councilman Eddinger, um, Councilman Ruggles. I got a lot of calls from the public who all pretty much supported, um, but they did have a question or an issue with smoking in public. Uh, clouds of smoke walking through with their family. That's not something any of us want. So, listening to our solicitor, we picked a two-tier, um, finding system. I also reached back out to the majority of the seventeen municipalities in the Commonwealth that have already decriminalized this. And the average fine ranges, they don't have the two-tier, they have one. Average fine ranges from twenty-five dollars to two-fifty for the first offense. What I'm proposing today is that two-tiered system. If you're caught, um, and I, and I spoke to the chief about it as well, if you're caught with a small amount, amount of marijuana, which is based on the small amount ordinance from the state of Pennsylvania, in your possession, your first offense would be twenty-five dollars, second offense thirty-five, fourth, or, second offense thirty-five, third offense forty-five. What that is, if you just have marijuana in your hand, in your pocket, in your bookbag, you're not smoking it, you have a small amount. Those are what I'm proposing the fines to be. If you're caught smoking it in public, if you're downtown and you're just, you know, the first offense would be one-fifty, second offense two-fifty, third offense three hundred. Um, and then after the fourth offense, it go on both, after the third offense, it goes to the county court and they'll determine, um, the next steps. On all three of the, on, on both of these scenarios, you'll just pay the fine. You will not get a misdemeanor drug possession on your record and won't hinder you from future things throughout life. So, this is the best recommendation I can come up with after talking to everybody here, other municipalities, the police chief, and, um, members of the public. So, that's what I will be moving forward for next, uh, agenda next month to vote on. Anybody else?
I just want to support.
Are you making that amendment tonight?
Yes, sir. Yes.
So, I support what Mr. uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman Penabon said, you know, I think, 'cause since the whole, uh, you know, point to lower the fine is to, uh, and actually changing from criminal record to the summary offense is to actually remove the barrier for people of color and for minorities. So, I think, uh, lowering the fine can actually, um, it, it's much better. Instead of raising a fine and then putting more barriers, uh, for, for, for people who, who, who use, uh, who, who have a like, uh, who possess small amount of marijuana. So, I agree with you, Ms. uh, Councilman Penabon. I think twenty-five dollars, to start with twenty-five dollars is, is the best option for now.
Mayor, do you have any comment, Mayor?
Well, I would disagree. I, I, I think twenty-five dollars is, is minimal compared to what, um, smoking marijuana in public is going to do to the, the average person. Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't, I agree with your intent of that ordinance and I'm, and I'm glad it's only being introduced tonight 'cause I still wanna think about it and I probably will vote for it because I voted for it in a, in certain aspects of it in the past. But right now, twenty-five dollars.
If I could clarify, Mayor, I, I took your recommendation, the twenty-five dollars, we spoke to the police chief, that's just if, um, they stole a candy bar and when they were getting patted down, they had a small amount of, amount of marijuana in their pocket. Um, if they're caught smoking in public, the first fine is one-fifty as you recommended.
Oh, okay.
And then smoking, it goes up from one-fifty to two-fifty to three hundred. If you just have it in your pocket or in your purse or in your wallet, tho- those are the lower fines. But if you're actually smoking it, we start at the one-fifty that you recommended, then the two-fifty, then three hundred.
Then I would agree with you, what you are proposing, and I think you've done a great job with this ordinance.
Thank you.
I, um, I've talked to Mr. Penabon about my, uh, and the last time we brought this up, I voted no for it, and I will vote no again, only because my experiences, uh, me, one experience was that, I know I was on vacation one time and I was in Vegas, my wife and I, and we was on a public bus. And these four people and sections of the bus pulled out their marijuana and smoked it. And there was children on the bus. Now, that's my fear. I can say I know this world's changing and I can get behind a change if the state gets involved. But my fear is that, and this came up last night, we have a festival, someone's smoking. And it will be, I guarantee you, because people just like to push the envelope sometimes. And you have a small child there. It's too late, one sets up an atmosphere and that small child is breathing it in. Now, I, that's just my feeling on it. Councilman, uh, Penabon has done a, a great job in doing his homework and digging into this ordinance and making sure the eyes are dotted, cheese across. But I'm at the go, my gut feeling on it as I did before. So, I will be voting no on it.
Uh, I think we discussed that last night, like, I respect your opinion, but just to clarify, I think we did discuss that last night, that, uh, we're gonna mention, or it's already mentioned probably, Mr. Penabon said, that under eighteen.
I got it. I got that. But that's still my feeling.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I wasn't gonna watch the tape again, but it was really long. So, again, I, uh, I, I thought Council did a great job last night, honestly, just to, uh.
I made the amendment to change those fees as presented.
Yep. Okay.
So, I'll give it, we'll go over to make sure you have.
Do you need a vote on amendment, uh, to?
Yeah, uh, it should be, um.
Because it's being introduced, do we wait the next time?
No, no, I think you should do it now so that it's on the record. So, what you're gonna vote on in two weeks is on the record, so someone should move the amendment. If, if you agree it should be amended, uh, then you go, then you introduce. Then, then once it's amended, you introduce it as amended.
Okay, we got the amendment and, go ahead, I'm sorry, Dr. Ruggles.
Just your opinion here, okay? But this was sent out in its original form. So, it's being introduced tonight in a different form. So, the public was given this thing in its original form and hasn't, hasn't, hasn't seen it to come in tonight to comment on the amended form. You get what I'm saying?
It will have to be.
It would have ten days, though, right?
Right, it has to be published. We have to publish it.
What's that?
I have to, I'll have to make the amendments and then publish it before it comes up for vote, so it's gonna.
Oh, no, no, but I'm saying.
Has it ever been published before?
An ordinance has two opportunities. It, it gets published for this meeting, right? And people could come in and comment on that particular thing, knowing that it's going to be introduced. And then, the next meeting, it gets voted on.
So, 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 so the question, so the question is, is this, is this?
And we haven't had this before, I, I, that I recall.
Is this, is this amended, is this amendment that substantive in nature that it would make a difference of the public knowing, knowing about the plan today?
I mean, it's, it's, it's now finding people smoking in the public, uh, a lot more money.
No, that was on last night. They, that's one of the things that discussed.
The original, the original proposal was, it was one fine for everyone.
For everybody.
What we discussed is what was said publicly numerous times was that we would go back with the four council members or the five that support it with the solicitor. We spoke to the chief. We discussed publicly that we would go back and we would probably change the fees to make it more palatable for everybody. That's what was stated publicly with the public here on, online. That's what we're doing now. So, there's no substantial changes that we're not made aware of yesterday that would hinder the progress going forward.
Yeah, but yeah, that, that's not, uh, Dr. Ruggles', um, uh, concern. But, but I do think that because of the nature, the two-step nature, that the subject matter itself, if the public knew about it, the, the vote will not take place until this amended version is publicized and there's two full weeks for everyone to think about it. And to me, that's the key part. When we talk about amending and, and whether we need to reintroduce it, that's generally when it comes time to vote and somebody comes up with amendment at that stage. I, I believe at this stage, we can, we can make that amendment and, 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 and be prepar- you could be prepared to deliberate and vote at the next meeting.
And if somebody does come with an amendment, they would still need a second or it would just fall dead.
Well, next, in, in two weeks, if someone came with an amendment, then if it's substantive, it's, it's gonna wait another two weeks.
But you would need a second on that amendment.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, you need to be changing and you, you vote, you know, what's on the agenda, you vote on. But that's why we, um, when you think about the issues, we've only, only had these issues when it comes to night to vote.
I was writing, I, I was part of writing the charter. And the reason that we did that two-week waiting period is the people would have opportunity to comment when it's introduced and then they'd have an opportunity to comment when it came up for vote. That was, that was the intent. And all I'm saying is that, all I'm saying is that when we change something, it, at the point of it being introduced, you've taken away that opportunity for individuals to, to comment on it at that first point, okay? That's the whole reason that we, we did those, those two. I mean, that was one of the reasons I should say that.
Councilman, I'm fine with the amendment tonight. And if anybody from council at the next meeting, the public can speak on, no, no, I'm just saying, I hear you. The public will speak on Tuesday, the Tuesday for committee and again on Wednesday for the vote. And if anybody on council makes an amendment, if there's a second, then we have to hold it for the next one. If there's no second, we'll just continue voting as normal. So, so we're still good.
And, and as we stand right now, we need a second.
And, and as we stand right now, we need a second.
So, so we have a first and a second on the fees for the two-tier.
Correct.
That's the, that's for the amendment.
Amendment, correct.
So then the, oh, then it's just a matter of you, you gotta vote on that and then it would be a matter of introducing it.
Right, then we'll introduce it with the new amendment.
And, and even though I understand about the two fa- facets, the general concept, the thing that the public really needs the notice on, that's what they have. The i- whole idea of changing enforcement to, from a fine, from a criminalized system only to a optional fine system. So I, I, I think it's okay.
Okay, uh, we need a vote on the change amendment.
And, so you wanna roll call?
Yep.
Yep.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabon?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Eddinger?
Aye.
Now, I'll make the motion to introduce that ordinance with the amendment.
Yeah, no motion, you just introduce.
Oh, introduce, sorry, right, no vote.
All right, Bill number forty-seven now.
Bill number forty-seven, an ordinance amending chapter four thirty, four fifty-six, annual fees for residential rental units.
Just uh, just, just to, to mention on that, the reason for that amendment is based on the uh, landlord initiative that I brought forward yesterday for the discussion. That has to do with the, this bill and the next uh, two.
Bill number forty-eight, an ordinance amending section four five six dash four, landlord engagement program.
So moved.
No, introduce please.
Introduce, sorry, introduce.
Bill number forty-nine, an ordinance amending section four five six dash eighteen, registration, licenses, and inspections.
Introduce.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, it's public comment and you may comment on any uh, thing in matters of the city of Easton. Please, Mister Hardy? You're on deck.
Could you please explain the LiDAR system? It's been a year since I heard this discussion about it, I can't remember.
I mean, it, 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 it's fairly technical, but essentially what it does is it surveys an area at a concentration of points that is uh, almost beyond your imagination. And, and, and basically each survey point that it, that it takes, when you plot it, it looks like a picture. That's, that's how dense the points are. So uh, we have one that's what I call a terrestrial, it's mounted on a tripod and we can just move it around wherever we want and take a scan. And we have one that's mounted on a drone. And we can fly the drone over an area and take a much larger area at a much faster pace.
Okay, thank you. The shade tree ordinance wasn't explained, I'd love to have an expla- explanation of that.
It allows resident homeowners to hang light, decorative lights on their trees in the front, the street trees that are a common area based on a lot of. In the right of way, sorry, uh, based on the um, all the uh, stipulations that were put in place.
I see.
They would need a permit.
Okay. How about the Eastern Trail, where's that supposed to be? I never heard where that's gonna be. The Eastern Trail. Has that been plotted?
Mister Hopkins, could you, could you explain what, what that, that grant is for, what they do?
So we, we've had a plan for quite some time to um, acquire the private rail line that runs, it, it's the overpass that goes over the Wawa and then it continues west.
The old Black Bridge.
Yeah, yep, and it continues west uh, toward Glendon Hill Road, Humor Park, uh, and that sort of thing. It also connects to uh, municipally-owned parcels that will take you up through West Easton, Wilson, and Palmer and connect to the Palmer bike path, so it's pretty strategic. Um, we were lucky enough to, to be awarded a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant uh, about a month ago as the initial, um, as the initial uh, uh, amount of money to begin the purchase. And then the Trust for Public Lands agreement that we had tonight was put in place because um, they're, they're very good at facilitating uh, land preservation through federal grants. And they were very instrumental in being able to negotiate an agreement of, well, we haven't signed it, but we have the conditions for an option on the property. Um, and as you may know, GDP has control over the trailhead portion of it. And I, I think it's going to be really wonderful trail connection if we can pull it off and the vision would also be to uh, evaluate the condition of the overpass and turn that into an elevated park, uh, which I think would be a wonderful amenity. The, the views are beautiful from up there. So that's, that's kind of what the, what the vision is for the trail. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mister Harvey, thank you.
The annual fee for landlords, uh, for, for landlords for residential properties, has that been decided yet?
So the uh, registration fee is going from seventy-five a year to eighty-five.
Okay.
Per year?
Per year.
Yeah, yeah.
Per year.
Landlords have to register, is that, then the registration, they have to register with the city?
Well, they do that now every year and it's seventy-five dollars a year, now it's just eighty-five.
What, what office do they register at?
Department of Code.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other person? Please state your name and address for the record and you have five minutes.
Millia Montestioco, four seventy-two Belmont Street, South Side. So, just clarification, Frank, yesterday at the committee meeting, it was ten dollars per landlord or ten dollars per unit?
Per landlord.
Because the seventy-five dollars is per unit that the, that is charged by the city currently.
For the inspection.
No, uh, rental registration per unit, seventy-five dollars per unit a year.
For the license?
Yeah, it's twenty-five dollars for business license per landlord. So that's, I, I just had a question.
Well, I should be asking you this question, you were on the committee. Uh, Code Department said they were charging seventy-five per landlord in the city straight across. So they agreed to put a ten-dollar fee to go from seventy-five to eighty-five.
No, from my understanding.
Per landlord.
Seventy-five.
Per landlord.
Per unit, per registration license.
That's what I was saying.
So that's where, I think it's been a little confusion. Yesterday, there was the same confusion today and there's been other conversations being had, so I just wanted to clarify.
This is the first time it's been brought to me by your committee or anybody else?
Well, on, 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 on Home Easton, we just, we didn't come up with the pricing or anything, we, you know, that's up to you guys.
But I mean, when it was, nobody told me that, that, that was a difference, so if you want to send an email to Michael Brett, um, who's the chair of your committee and uh, he could figure it out because it came from Michael Brett and from Code that it was seventy-five, so they agreed to add ten, which would make it eighty-five.
Okay, yeah, that's my question.
As of my understanding, it is for uh, per landlord.
Per landlord, right.
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah, but definitely.
Where there's confusion on that is that the inspection fee is per unit because we're inspecting each unit.
Definitely.
But the licensing for the individual is per landlord, so that's why there probably some confusion.
Well, I mean, I'm.
That's what it was planned last night, right?
I'm also landlord in Easton and a Realtor and I can tell you from my personal experience, it's twenty-five dollars for a business license and seventy-five dollars per rental unit. So that's why I think, I, I don't know where these numbers are coming from and I think the person to clarify this would be Dwayne.
Yeah, they, they, that, by the way, that, no, that, that's a very legitimate question that's being raised because it may well be that the um, uh, that we either have to have, you have to have a separate category because it is, the charges are based on per unit with the registration fees because that's to cover the cost of the inspections, the cyclical, cyclical inspections, so, so that it has to be based on a per-unit cost because that's where the energies are spent.
Say that again, because I wasn't paying attention at the beginning.
Okay, seventy-five dollars a unit has been the fee for every registered residential owner and that's to offset the cost of periodic inspections of each unit. So it is on a per-unit basis. The license, the landlord registration in a sense, um, is, the license fee is a totally different thing. That's just what we pay to do business in Pennsylvania for our business.
But again, I think you should speak to Mike because Mike and Dwayne, there's some other things going on that, that are separate from this. So you should speak to Mike, he could, he could, and then he could bring it back to us.
Mister Clark will look into it because we should, we should be taking the ball there and it may well be that we just have to come up with a different category of fee to make it clear.
Yeah, I just think, I just wanted clarification on that because I don't think, there, the question was brought up yesterday and there's still the same kind of confusion today. So, thanks guys.
I will talk to Mister Brett and I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay. I believe we're on.
We have a speaker.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, counsel.
State your name and address.
My name is Ronald Johnson, I live on Washington Street. Uh, I'm here in response to the mayor's statements last meeting. I have his direct quotation from the meeting and it says, "I can't stand that we're here trying to do an ordinance to protect illegals. These people commit crimes. If you vote for this ordinance, you're voting to have crime in this city." Some may suggest that this statement is grounded in ignorance, xenophobia, fascism, and being out of touch with the day-to-day reality of workers throughout this city whose only crime is trying to provide a better life for their families. Put bread and butter on the family table, dining room table. I beg each member of um, East City Council to reconsider um, and bring forward a welcoming ordinance so that individuals in this city who are living in perpetual fear of having family separation, of having Immigration and Customs Enforcement um, raid their home, do worksite raids, or have uh, regular traffic violation turn into something that will adversely affect their, their family. Uh, I think it's crucial that the human dignity of every worker in this city of Easton is respected uh, and acknowledged and the rhetoric that dehumanizes or criminalizes um, individuals, especially the most vulnerable uh, social strata uh, within the workforce, um, I think is unacceptable and I wish that the city that I love, that uh, I grew up in, uh, I grew up in downtown, I grew up in West Lafayette Street. Um, I love this, this city, I love um, the twelve million, twelve thousand work, uh, sorry, the uh, tens of thousands of workers that make it run every day. So I um, really, really wish that we could just bring something that's more humane and not perpetuate inhumane rhetoric that is just seen on Fox News um, that billionaires, you know, try to um, instill amongst the workforce to make worker go against worker. Things are not okay, things are very, very uh, fearful. Um, there's senior citizens who have worked decades, who are fearful to go to the grocery store, who are fearful to go to work every day. And due to no fault of their own, uh, there's no legal pathway for low-income migrant workers to naturally, to really recognize their status. Uh, so I really beg for some level of compassion and humanity, um, let's keep our, our neighbors safe, let's keep our communities safe. Uh, let's not aid and abet um, this state-sanctioned terror against our community. I don't know why, in the twenty-first century, this is happening, thank you.
Ronald, thank you for speaking, if I may, we spoke a few times about it. One comment you made you wish we would reconsider and I know I mentioned this to you before, to reconsider would mean we've considered. Nothing has been brought forward, we haven't considered anything. Um, I don't know what we're reconsider, we didn't consider anything.
So, Mister Ronald, uh, actually, I am planning to uh, you know, introduce the ordinance. I have been working with ACLU and some other uh, organizations uh, to, to make sure we have the proper language and uh, uh, because of course I do want uh, the support of other council members, wanna make sure it's passed. So this is exactly why I'm working with, with civil rights organizations and immigration rights organizations to make sure we uh, you know, we do have a proper language and proper ordinance. Um, and I am planning to uh, introduce at the next council meeting, uh, we are almost there of preparing everything.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman, I appreciate it.
Will we take that to committee then next time?
Absolutely, yeah, it will be that committee agenda, yeah.
I appreciate it, counsel, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? We spoke earlier. What hat you wearing, Joel?
Excuse me?
What hat are you wearing?
Um, I'm, I'm personal.
Okay.
Um, and, and actually I almost, I'm almost embarrassed to mention it, but I said to the people I wrote to that I was going to do this if I got, if I received no satisfaction. And um, this has to do with the uh, cherished newspapers that are in paper form. Um, we are, we are now left with only the Allentown Morning Call to the extent that we have to give legal notices and pay their fees because there's no clarity as to whether digital newspapers can be used in, in, with respect to publication. And, and for that reason, I think the Morning Call owes a duty that when you're a subscriber, that they actually deliver the paper. And I'm kinda curious as to whether other people are experiencing the same thing, but just as a quick summary, and, and again, there's nothing I'm looking for anyone here to do except that I would hope that maybe the Allentown Morning Call will hear this and report this as a story about how they collect payments and don't deliver. Um, I don't know, I live up on College Hill and my, February fifth, I had a newspaper delivered, that was the last time it was actually delivered. I called their customer service about six times, I speak to the same person, same person keeps saying we'll refer it up to delivery. I beg them, and I've also learned their customer service is not local, I have no clue where they're from. But I also have no clue who does delivery of newspapers up there because they won't answer that question. I've written to the editor, he won't answer the question, I've written to customer service, they won't answer. So I just hope that the legislature will consider, and it's not for you, some amendment because if the newspapers aren't being delivered, there's no reason why we should have to be paying the higher cost of print advertising. And thank you for listening to me. Oh, I did get a paper last Sunday, so to, for the record, and since February five, I've had two papers delivered and I've been charged for twelve, I guess.
Well, we, I, I, I'll just let you know, I, we, we canceled our delivery and we still got them, so maybe, maybe we got yours.
Yeah, I, I canceled them myself, but you know, Mister Shear, I noticed that uh, there's some communities that are advertising legal notices in the online uh, Express Times version.
Yeah, and, and the scary part is that we, we've talked about this and we haven't been able to find any clear authority to do that. So the problem is if you have to provide the legal notice and you don't, someone could challenge the legislation.
Well, according to the other solicitor out there, we just can go ahead and do it if the state doesn't come and, and just go ahead and do it.
But even when I was on zoning hearing board, we had issues with a, a, a publication of general circulation.
I'm gonna remember that all the time.
Which is kind of vague in itself.
Well, well, the general circ, I mean, the, the funny thing about the general circulation, there are a lot of lawyers who will use like the, the home, the papers are in the diners as part of a newspaper of general circulation within Northampton County. I think, you know, and my view has always been, you know, when I'm doing estate ads, that I should use a newspaper where someone within the city of Easton might actually read it pretending that people read legal notices. And I, I don't know at what point, well, I mean, we'll probably get an edict one day that legal, all the notices must go posted on X as the only place. that legal, all the notices must go posted on X as the only place, um, but.
You, you have a big infatuation with Elon Musk, that's the third meeting in a row you mentioned him.
I, I, I fear for my country.
Anyone else in the public? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn, second. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, yes, I'm being pointed out about this letter, I believe, uh, I'm gonna submit this letter that was sent in from counsel from, uh, Mr. Armando. Uh, I think the, the mayor addressed it already, so I'm just gonna, uh, put this into the record, the letter, and. You can. With, well, you could have done it under your thing, oh, I'm gonna ask counsel, would you allow him to?
I can, I can, I can read it.
No, he, he can do it, he can do it.
Did, did somebody not read it in the Morning Call the other day?
And I think the mayor addressed it already, would you like to read it?
Yeah, you can read it.
Absolutely. I figured since the mayor already addressed it already and apologized, that was more than enough. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, sir.
We need protection, we don't need some silly apology.
That's not right to talk like that.
That's fine. Good evening, Eastern City Council.
A silly apology? What are you talking about?
You make a hundred thousand dollars, Mayor.
We're not gonna get into that.
You start, you be a little professional, please.
Excuse me?
He just allowed you to speak when you didn't have to, because comments over.
Good evening, Eastern City Council. My name is Armando Mortiz, and I am a resident of Wilson Borough, a neighbor of Easton. If you are wondering why an individual from outside the city is addressing you, you may be aware of an opinion piece I wrote for the Morning Call titled, "Easton's Mayor's Comments on Welcoming City Ordinance Proposal Shows Why Ordinance Is Needed." I do not wish to reiterate the arguments made in that initial piece. Rather, I would point to some of the reaction that piece received as confirmation of one of my greatest fears. Mayor Panto's remarks at the February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting have been described as a matter of misspeaking, being taken out of context, and inartful. They have also been described as accurate and racist. Obviously, all of these interpretations cannot be true simultaneously. Mayor Panto obviously meant something when he said them. Whether that something was poorly conveyed or sincerely meant is the question at hand. An apology for pure, poor communication or for sincerely meaning these things would clarify this immediately. The argument has been made that Mayor Panto does not need to apologize because there has not been a backlash to these comments. To this, I would simply say that moral and ethical actions should not be entirely subject to public opinion. Politicians, by and large, are tasked with leading by example. Whether or not one makes an apology for inartful comments should not be subject to the number of supportive comments or positive reactions to a social media post. This should all be true, regardless of one's service to a community or history of being an ally in related efforts. If it is not, I must ask, how long must one serve a community before they are eligible to misspeak about that community without consequence? Such a question is ridiculous, but it makes plain how ridiculous it is to defend a person's comments by pointing to their historical record. Additionally, if such historical partnership were genuine, making a public apology should be a simple matter. I will close my remarks by explaining why I wrote my initial op-ed and why I am delivering this testimony tonight. While I am not a resident of the city, I, like many other residents in surrounding communities, spend time in Easton. My son's first in-person birthday party was at the Corolla Factory. I had a birthday there too, sorry, I just thought about it. My family was found, has found community and camaraderie at Poliwoggs and Petunia, sorry if I'm mispronouncing it, State Cafe and Nurture Nature, uh, Nurture Nature Center, the West Ward Market, and of course, the Easton Public Market. I have continually championed, sorry. I have continually championed the city's good work on walkability, accessibility, and economic development to friends, family, and colleagues. Locally, regionally, and across the country, and just between us, I have grown a greater fondness for Easton than my first love of the Lehigh Valley, uh, city of Bethlehem. I do not claim to know Mayor Panto's heart or intentions, but I do know the heart of many city residents and business owners. That heart is not reflected in the comments made on February twelfth, particularly in this turbulent political moment. The words of local leaders reverberate even louder than before. As I stated in my op-ed, I believe Easton is a welcoming city, it can be more welcoming, and it can achieve this without impacting public safety. Regardless of your opinions on any particular ordinance, the public deserves an honest dialogue. I'm hoping that such a dialogue is possible, and I wish you the best in addressing the challenges of this fraught political moment, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ronald. I do want to say before I end here that myself, as a first-generation immigrant, me and my community actually deserve Mr. Panto's apology, he was apology.
Mr. Roy, so, Mayor, I already gave it. I made the comments, and, and the gentleman that spoke for Wilson Borough said it was a silly apology, it wasn't from the heart.
Mayor, and I, and I, I, I thought I addressed that, that I, I heard you say that you did apologize, that's, that's for, I was gonna hand the letter in, because you did, uh, make a statement.
But he calls me a liar.
Excuse me, Sultana, that you did say that you apologized, and I think that's, uh, where we wanted to go with that. At this point in the agenda, we're gonna have a motion to adjourn?
Already did.
You did? That's how long ago.
I second it.
And second, roll call, please.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Karen.
Aye. Did I say you?
I don't hear Roger, I don't hear Roger.
Aye, thank you, sorry about that. Yeah.